Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and ask if anybody's recording, they make it known. Thank you. First item of business this evening is the minutes for September 11th and September 25th. The board prepared to act on those at the moment.
Twenty-fifth.
Were you making a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I moved it on the 25th. The minutes be accepted as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that emotion.
Discussion? Is everybody prepared, they're read through it, are they still in the process?
Looks like the manual's still reading.
Is that the 25th, right?
No.
Yep.
Guess it can go in the garbage.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes for September 11th.
I have a motion, then a second. Are you prepared to vote? On the 11th, okay. You have a motion on the 25th we haven't voted on yet. Are you prepared to vote on the 25th?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Abstained? Now you can do the 11th.
Intertain, entertain a motion to accept the minutes for September 11th as written.
As a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Looks like four of us were here for that, Mike was not. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Thank you. And if there's nobody has a problem, I'd take one item out of order, just so... Quick business to take up, Donna Patron for 47 Swiss Beach Road. We had continued that pending some research on whether it belongs here or in front of the Board of Appeals and...
And the building commissioner determined that it was properly before the Board of Appeals and not before the planning board.
So you've asked to withdraw the application, and I would like a motion to accept that withdrawal.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You have Bay Point Mile High, is that?
No, we do not have the...
It's not ready to go?
Covenant.
Okay, we'll scratch that. Next is an approval not required plan for Blue Wave map off Chajpon Road, we have four of those. Map 113... Lot 1014A.
This is just the first one, one of four.
Second of you already?
Good evening, board members, for the record, my name is Lawrence Winnaker, I represent the applicant. With me tonight is Rich Riccio from Field Engineering and John Mancini from Blue Wave. And I know that Ken has reviewed these and per our discussion this morning, my understanding is that he sees no issues. You speak for yourself, obviously, but we're here...
That is correct.
I'm sorry?
That is correct.
We're here to answer any questions you might have, and if not, we're asking you to endorse the plan.
So we are creating parcels here, is that what I'm seeing?
It's eliminating lot lines.
Rich, can you...
Yes. There's three assessors lots here, 1002A, 1003, and then 10148. We're extinguishing these, the interior lines, just to create a perimeter of one contiguous parcel.
Whereabouts are we on Chajpon Road?
This is up, the highway department is like down in this area, yeah, down in this area here.
Yeah.
This is just beyond the highway, the highway line, out in the...
On the right.
Cranberry block, so on the right inside.
Rich, maybe you could use the overall assemblage plan to explain how this relates to the other... You can use this one if you want.
Yeah, I'll put it over on the... So the first one we're talking about is this parcel, these three parcels right here. This is Chajpon Road here, this is the Talawayhams parcel here, it's an existing gravel access drive that accesses this whole Cranberry block complex adjacent to the, to the highway barn here. The next lot over is Sherkran Cranberries offices, and that is basically in this location here. So the first thing in our plan we have before you is to combine these, these three lots in this, in this vicinity here.
Questions?
Just one. So the existing 220-foot wide ever-source electric easement, is that the main power lines that's halfway down Chajpon on the, that crosses the road?
Yeah, and it comes down and then it crosses over Route 25 down here. That runs, runs through the property, correct?
Yeah.
And then there's the power lines over here that go this way to cross Chajpon Road.
Right.
The substation is up right up at this one here.
So none of it, none of it's visible from the road?
Correct.
Because I'm just beyond that main power line. So I gotta listen to that thing hum and buzz, so I don't want to see these things reflecting.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good distance from, from, even from the substation to the, the next closest, you know, the closest parcel.
Almost.
Anything else? Motion? I asked for a motion, I kept...
This is just the first one. This is one of four.
This is...
This is the first one of four.
Is that a motion?
I, I would make a motion to endorse that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was for your entertainment. Should be all right. The next one is for map 115 lot 1004.
Let me get these put away. Mitch, do you want to take the mile off?
Yes.
For recording?
Thank you.
Collect the plans.
Want to keep them straight?
Yeah, try to keep them straight. Doing map 113 lots?
Yeah.
1013B and 1014C.
Correct. What they just showed on your on the plan as well, where we're at. This is once again a form of a plan combined two parcels, 101 right, 1014B and 1014C, again off Chajpon Road. And that is these two parcels here, the last one was these three parcels, these two parcels here, 1013B and 1014C, Chajpon Road B. This guy's a line here between Chajpon Road and the site, Cranberry block, this area is being a gravel operation right now. And that's how this, where this one falls in relation to the, to the property. Town line here, the access road into the site, existing substation that's up here, 220-foot wide easement going this way, and 100-foot wide easement going this way, that cuts to the highway.
Questions? Motion?
Entertain a motion to endorse?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the next is map 115 lot 1010.
I think it's 115.
Lot 1004.
Lot 1004. You skipped one, Judge.
Mine's, did I skip?
1000.
Oh, I skipped the whole one, I'm sorry, 1004.
This is a, a single lot, finally, for a plan of four, in the area on this site. For the, the easement, this parcel, we have two. It's around the back of the Cranberry block, once again, one on this side, similar situation.
Where is this one, guides to the...
Yeah, it's a perimeter plan.
This is a bay side parcel here, Ashley Young's parcel, on the south side.
Well, that's, that's way in the back.
Yeah, that's further down.
It's not a visible lot.
Cranberry block system all around here. The pond is over in this area.
Now, where's the new pond that was dug, just to your left?
It's just also just...
With interior outlines?
Costner, is, is...
Just a perimeter plan.
Are you handling all the, all the solar on this, or is that someone else?
No, you mean the petitions before the ZBA, or...
Well, all this, I think, is, is this all to put solar in down there?
These four projects for this client?
Yeah.
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 Yes.
So still a basic question, we don't see anything from Chajpon Road that's that far back. Okay. There are no, are there any requirements for easements from the town to access these properties, or...
They, they don't have, they do have an access easement onto the property through the town's parcel here. There's internal easements that will be granted between the property owners and my clients to get to the, to the arrays, to the parcels. Those will be, access easements will be sized adequately for emergency access to get to, to the, to those, those points. Right now, we're just talking about the, the parcel itself, the zoning freeze that's...
This lot already exists? There's a lot?
Yes, yes. It's parcel 1004.
And the, the Board of Appeals has site plan review authority, so the plans will be under their permission.
Well, I was just questioning because it's basically landlocked, there's no frontage, so it already exists. We're just quantifying it, is that basically? Don't everybody jump at once? Motion? Questions, anything?
Take a motion. To endorse? Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, so... There's a sign. Now we're up the lot 1010.
This is, um, the fourth is lot 1010, once again, it's a single lot on the parcel, Route 25 runs on the southern side of that easement. It's this, this sort of location here.
Entertain a motion to endorse?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Last question on this one.
Sure.
In the center of lot 1010, could you explain the note about the property line at the southerly and easterly side lining of the town layout? Town layout in that area.
Talking about this, this note right here.
Talking about that note, yeah.
Yep, yep, this, I think it's a 1966 layout of, and that's actually follows this line in through the site and comes up, up this way, up the easement that we had, it's a state, a state layout, which I'm sure you, you've, you've seen.
As an access route?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a limited access layout is what it's called on the, on the record drawing.
How wide is it?
It's 20 feet, I believe.
Why don't we see that?
It was just, I mean, that was what was, how it was shown on the previous recorded plan as well.
If there's a layout, then there ought to be some definition of it, I would think, and I'm not seeing that.
That's something we can, we can, we could probably add those beats and bums on that, I know we have it because we drew it in from that, but we were just trying to replicate what was previously on record on that parcel.
Well, so there's a, a 20-foot strip that is owned by whom?
It's, I mean, it's listed as a town layout, so it's a private town layout, I don't, if it's, I can, I mean...
I think that needs some clarification now. If it was done as a part of the layout for Route 25, which is what they used to do, where access from other locations such as across the highway was cut off, they would establish a layout in some other locations so that people would have access to the property, I understand that. But this isn't really defining what that is, and whether or not there's a separation between, say, lot 1010 and the adjacent lot of Sherkran, if that's a town layout, does the town own it?
I, I believe it's, I believe it's just an easement across that property, but we'll have to...
I would think, even if it's just an easement, I would think you'd want to show it, so that you've got a clear idea as to what's there, and whether or not it's going to be impacted at all by future panels for solar use, that sort of thing.
Could you do that tomorrow?
Yeah, we could get that right in.
If, if he could do it tomorrow, Charlie, would you be available to see it?
Yeah.
Because I, I would ask the board if they would approve it subject to the modification approved by Charlie, so that you could sign it. That, that work, I mean, that way you'd be sure that whatever, you know, whatever you feel ought to be depicted would be done. Because we would like to...
I'm a little, I'm a little reluctant to sort of act for the board, not knowing exactly what the ramifications might be at this point.
The reason...
If I would see it and still have a concern, then I think it ought to be explained to the board so that they know what's going on.
If you still have a concern.
Yeah, but I have no way of knowing.
What I'm suggesting is that an approval be subject to your review and approval of it, if you still have a concern, then you indicate it to George. The problem, Charlie, when...
I have a problem with that, I really do.
The problem is that the 20-day clock is running, and...
Well, listen, the planning board has 21 days to endorse a Form A plan. This is not the same as a special permit application or anything like that, so under, under chapter 41, they...
I think it was filed September 27th. I'm just trying to make it easier, I don't want to put you in a position of having any issues.
I don't feel that, I don't feel that I have the authority to make a decision on the planning board's behalf on something that could be critical. I can make a recommendation, but it's ultimately up to the board to accept that, whether or not they want to. So I'd be glad to take a look at it, but all I can do is make a recommendation to the board. I don't want to say, yes, it's okay to sign, I don't think that's right for me to do.
How's the board feel?
I understand Charlie's point.
Suppose hypothetically we depict it, Charlie sees it, no problem, just hypothetically, and you notify George. I mean, is that, if there's the slightest issue in your mind, then he won't, he will, you know, it's not approved, has to be subject to your review anyway, you would look at it.
I don't know what, I don't, if all, if all that's going to be done is, is another line put 20 feet away from this one, that's not telling me anything.
No.
So if, if there are details on that plan, it turns out that it's going to adjust this plan in some way, that's got to come before the board so they can see it. I think that's the only appropriate way to do it.
Yeah, so I withdraw my second on the motion.
Well, that gets us, again, in that position where the 20 days is going to lapse in two days, and you got a town meeting coming up. And, you know, that's, that's my concern.
I don't know what to tell you.
It's a little long.
About that.
Yeah, it is.
Make a recommendation.
You haven't made it yet.
Did the...
Selectmen make a recommendation?
Make a recommendation on what?
On the...
Were on the...
On the...
No, there was, there was no...
No, because I don't think the solar article was ready, was it?
Your next meeting is in two weeks, correct?
Next Monday.
Monday?
No.
The night of the town meeting?
Yeah, we could meet the same night as town meeting.
Yeah.
We usually planned a meeting then, but... We usually planned a meeting then, but...
I mean, you know, one option is not to take any action. Not trying to be difficult, but I, I, normally wouldn't be an issue, but we've got this, you know, the twenty days is critical.
When was this filed?
Twenty-seventh.
Yes, September twenty-seventh.
That's, that's the intent, is to forestall any change in bylaw at town meeting?
Yeah, it is. There's no, Rich indicated that, I think in September eleventh, that that was a likely scenario.
One of the things that the A and R does is protect against changes in use. It doesn't protect against changes in other requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Right.
So, it would not protect against dimensional requirements, but it does protect the use. So, the question is whether or not the bylaw that goes before town meeting would, would prohibit solar fields in the, in this zoning district, in which case this protection is important to them. And that, that's the reason why I had suggested the, you know, the possibility of...
I, I understand the...
I, I'm just explaining.
Reason behind it, I do.
I mean, as I said, the other option is to take no action. You know?
If, if you take no action, then it's basically endorsed by default, is it not?
That's correct, yeah.
So, wouldn't it be more appropriate to withdraw the plan, submit it back again at the next meeting after we've had a chance to review this and make sure that there's no issue?
No, because we lose, we lose the protection if we do that.
It'll be before next town meeting.
No, but we, we want to get it endorsed before the town meeting. That's the whole point.
Well, I, I guess I would question whether or not it's appropriate to file it to the point where you've got nineteen days lapsed on the time period that the planning board has to act on this. In other words, it was always, my understanding that in A and R, once it got filed with the board, which is submitted tonight, is twenty-one days from that date.
No, it's twenty days from the date of filing.
It's up to you.
I mean, it's not that we're unhappy about doing whatever Charlie asks. That's not a problem. We'll be happy to do it. Do it first thing tomorrow. It's just that to then have to wait two weeks or even till Monday, the night of the meeting, it just, it's just, it just wouldn't work time-wise. Even, even if you take no action and it's approved by that method, we'll still do what Charlie asked. I represent that to you. I'm not, I'm not refusing to do that.
Recommend?
We'll do whatever you want.
Not an issue.
It, it's just the timeframe.
I think that's, that's a bad precedent. That's, that's why I withdrew my second. He, the engineer said it was there and he took it off to make it look like the old one, that, that he should have left it alone.
That's not what I, that's not what I had.
Say it again then, sir?
No, I just, we, we took that line off of a previous record drawing. That's, and we replicated that line on our drawing, absent any additional information at the time of the filing.
Say that again? You took the...
That line is, has been shown on previously recorded plans as representing that, that side of the property line. We replicated that line from the previously recorded plans on this drawing as it was shown previously. I didn't take anything off to, or anything to that effect.
If, if, if we'd be more comfortable, take no action, and then we'll still give, give you what you want.
You're not giving us nothing, you're giving what you want.
Is the... No, I'm giving, we're going to give you the data and the information that Charlie's asked us to do. All I'm saying is that if you, if you aren't comfortable with the suggestion I made about him reporting whatever it is to George...
I, I feel that...
Don't approve it.
I feel that sets a bad precedence. In other words, we're going to give you a constructive grant because your data or your information isn't acceptable.
I'm not sure whether it's an incorrect submission. I mean, it's data, data that Charlie wants, so if you elect a third option, then we have to appeal. I mean, that, you know, that's the last thing anybody wants.
That layout, is that off of this property and this is the...
Yes.
No idea where it goes or where it starts, where it finishes?
No, it... It generally follows this road coming in and around, and then it comes up the easement up this way. I don't know how far it goes this way. We were only concerned with how it was shown on the, on the northerly, you know, boundary about property.
Is that the cop path referred to?
No.
So, that's a separate?
No, that's a separate, this, this, the cop, property line on, this, this line here is the center line of the cop path, which is what I think we'll locate it.
Well, what's, what's pleasure do you?
I think we should support Charlie, what Charlie's looking for, however it means we gotta, whatever we're gonna do to get it.
I don't want to, I don't want to cause issues here. I think there's a way that perhaps it can be addressed. I don't think it makes any difference to the project itself in terms of what this plan shows because the location of all of the ultimate solar panels and so forth, the mounting positions and all of that stuff is shown on a detailed plan. If it's not, if this line and the twenty-foot easement is not shown on those detailed plans, I would have a real issue with that. I can withdraw the suggestion about this particular plan for the A and R for that purpose, but it will become an issue on the final plan. And if it isn't addressed properly there, then we'd have to see what happens.
It'll be there.
Okay.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a possibility that what you see would invalidate anything?
I wouldn't know that until I saw the details of what that layout plan shows, Emmanuel. They're purporting to say this plan, it's not even really defined except by some lines. We don't know what the courses and distances are, how it was defined by the state. They're saying it's, it's a easterly, southerly and easterly sideline of a town layout. So, when it comes to the details of that plan, if it makes any change in what I see here, then maybe they'd be forced to come back and take another chance with this plan.
In, in your judgment, in your professional judgment, is there a possibility that there would be something that you produce that might invalidate?
No, nothing that would invalidate what you guys do this evening. If in our, you know, we, we can further define that line with a meets and bounds description, you know, it, it'll, it'll just tighten that line up better than what we've got shown on this.
So, I, I think what we're saying is the perimeter is pretty much what it is, regardless of the placement of this easement, because you've depicted the boundary to that easement. It would affect the placement of any solar panels you may place in the future.
Based on...
Well, based on the fact that if this right-of-way crosses this parcel at some point, they obviously can't put panels there, are they? At their own risk.
Do you think the access should be shown?
Is he talking about ZBA plans?
The...
I don't think the, the filing of this would eliminate that.
No.
That right-of-way or whatever.
Form A wouldn't eliminate the right-of-way anyhow.
Charlie, are you reviewing the ZBA petition?
I will be, yeah.
You'll be the co... Okay, so we'll make sure that the final plans that Charlie reviews for the ZBA site plan approved, you'll have them.
Okay. All right.
And what...
And if you could, with respect to that, just give me the book and page reference for that layout and the...
I, I can get that too, because I've been, we, we, we tried to find it before we did this, and absent of the actual document, we, we used that previous record drawing that was done for this to, to draw that, but that is available. I believe it came up in the title research recently. So, I'll, and...
I'd like to see that.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Along with the lines that you draw.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That layout could quite possibly have been created to provide access to this property.
I'm sure it was, George, yeah.
But it's not showing the access to the property.
Because of the other side, we're not showing the full twenty, we're just showing that one line, so it's not really like it's a layout one, I understand.
What's the pleasure of the board? As I say, I think it, I think what they propose does depict what is intended, which is the perimeter of the property.
Your motion still good?
Yeah.
Well, I'll put my second back in there because I, I've known counsel for a lot of years, and if he says he's going to get it to Charlie's liking, I believe he'll do it. And if he doesn't, John, we're going to be looking at you.
It'll be done.
First one's free.
It'll get done.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
Next is an approval not required for Founda Market Road, A.D. Maypeace, map one oh six, lot fourteen and one B.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Kenneth Conphy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, A.D. Maypeace. I'm with Beals and Thomas. We're the engineers who prepared the plans. And this first plan is the establishment of two parcels. One parcel is already developed with solar arrays, parcel one dash A. This plan is prepared to quantify a new parcel of lot one B, which has adequate area and tonnage, tonnage on Founda Market Road, approximately thirty acres. Board has any questions, we'd be happy to respond.
What are they requesting?
What, what are you asking for in this? What are you trying to do?
I'm just trying to quantify these two parcels. One was already previously created, and the second parcel is shown on this property now. I think it was labeled a little bit differently previously, so we're just trying to get a good plan on record showing both parcels.
What is there, what exists now?
Lot one B is vacant. Lot one A is a, a solar facility.
I'm sorry, what...
Okay, I'm turned around, okay.
That was supposed to be the technology lot a while ago, originally?
Yeah, that was previously a subject of...
And it got cut in half?
The hot attack park that was rescinded, yes.
Creams Landing's a little further out. For a number of years, I think Maypeace used it as a parking area during the Cranberry Festival.
Is there a intended purpose for one D coming up?
Not at this time.
So, I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking back here a few years, but when they came in for that solar panel thing there, and, and this was the parking and they parked on that as well, and I'm trying to remember how we worded that, but I, I thought this was already separated. Am I wrong? I could be wrong. I thought we separated that.
That was cut out of that technology section. Originally, it was, was approved way back, John.
All right, but my, my memory is, is, is this the, is this the one that we talked about when they, when they put this in? They were going to berm up on the side so it would block it from the road?
Yeah.
The existing one is, is constructed that way.
Yes, sir. But, but what I mean is, you used to come in way down on the bottom, and you could go in, they used to park for the, for the Cranberry Festival and all that, and they, and they divided that, I thought, my...
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Yeah, this is just a re-clarification of the lots, really, is all it is. There's no new lot lines you're looking at here.
There's new lot lines. There's no new...
No lines.
So, I'm at a loss. I, I, I thought we subdivided, I thought you divided this previously when they did that solar...
I mean, there's also the, the potential for protecting the use on the property is what we're seeking as well here.
It's a freeze plan.
It's the use.
Okay. But I just remember going through conditions in the Hill and the, we already made two lots, I thought.
Good memory.
Subdivided this one. Well, sometimes.
What day is this?
Actually, I think if we could thought that, I think if we could...
Have there been any significant dimensional changes here?
No.
No. So, several years back, all, all the same surveying was there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm all set. I, I was just checking the memory, Mr. Chairman, to make sure I was talking to where I was at.
Who are you again?
Entertaining motion? Certainly. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. And finally, we have an A and F, map one oh five, lot one thousand and ten... And finally, we have an ANF, map one oh five, Lot one thousand two, F106, lots L one and L two off of Charlotte Fertis.
Test your memory on this one as well. This is more of the creation of a previous lot that was consolidated or removed from the property to the south. The property to the south is parcel A dash one, which is about thirty-five acres, and that is the property that houses the solar facility. And the little four-sided parcel that we're creating on this plan is actually previously part of that thirty-five acres. For whatever reason was amalgamated and consolidated, it's remaining eleven acres off of Charlotte Fertis Road. Preparation of this plan, AD Maypeace is seeking to recreate that eight-acre parcel, which would potentially join the remaining thirty-five acres again and be rejoined again. That's not what we're doing right now, we're just creating a separate parcel right now as step one. As you can see, it's well-monumented.
Which one are you referring to, A two?
A two, yes, this, this plan is the creation of parcel A two, actually, is.
It's a solar farm here now. Yep. But the works is here. The beating buildings up here. We just approved that tomorrow.
A one has existing solar panels.
It's a solar-
Yes.
If we go to the shared lot on A one and A two, what is the setback on those panels?
Everything else up there.
Proposed lot line?
I'm not sure what the setback is. The, the northerly lot line of parcel A dash, parcel A one is already in existence, so the panels are offset, you know, within zoning to those panels. I don't know what the distance is, but it was, you know, we went through site plan approval.
That line was established before the-
Yeah, that's not the new, there's no, the actual new lot line would be the ninety-degree line, that is the four hundred and ninety-one foot distance and the four hundred and forty-six, I think it is.
Ninety-six, yeah.
Four ninety-six. That would be the new lot line on this plan.
Is the intent to put more solar panels back there?
Again, the intent, you know, the intent of the plan again is to protect the use for three years.
And this one here is wide open, you know, there's no, there's nothing to that one. They won't, they won't die here, so.
Yeah.
This goes all into the B dot, and there's old bogs and stuff up there, down here. See way back when I proposed, the Oakley District, did want access to this property, this property comes through the back up here. I grew up in some, but then they changed their mind, they come and bastardize all this, and they sell it. It's probably right, you can't really stop them, you know, promises were made, never kept hold on, kept through one. This was the one that they read through, I remember one of four six buildings, we have us on this parcel right here, what a lot. So it's just a matter of time before they chalk that all up.
Entertaining the motion, George? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? There's a sign on. Still on the pen. There's one there, I think.
There's two, there's paper copy there.
Okay, for a three mile. One mile.
Feeling that it was sad, jerky.
I think they do, it's in existence. Thank you, folks. It'll get done.
The other, like I said, first one's free.
Next, we have the continued public hearing for site plan review on Sixth Recovery Road.
No public comments on, on this particular issue, think you just rubber stamps?
That was not the solar, that was just a, a codification of the lot lines, the solar would be-
If you're anybody up here asked that, that's part of the B dot property.
We know it's part of the B dot.
And it's not authorized usage.
Changing a lot line is not a usage. The point you make would be addressed at-
Is that a valid, is that a valid issue?
That point would be raised at the public hearing for the site plan for the solar when that comes up.
Okay. All right, that is just, like I say, you didn't ask for any public input on that, and everybody at this table knows it's not a valid usage for the B dot property. The last solar array was snuck in without any public input, it won't happen this time.
Again, Sixth Recovery Road?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Barb Rogers with GAF Engineering.
Mm-hmm.
With me this evening, I have Roy Katignani.
Katignani.
Katignani, from, I've been practicing, from the concert group. They are the design builders for Coastal Orthodontics. If you would, I, I, we wanna be brief, we're, we're very close to a formal resubmit to the planning board, but we're not there yet. We wanted to, and that's what I was kind of afraid of, having the vacation week come up, and so we're very close, but we wanna review a few items with the planning board and make sure that we're, that we have the agreement of the planning board before this resubmit, so with your permission, I just wanna hand out a couple of-
Certainly.
Thank you.
These are simply the updated architectural plans. And, uh-
Thanks. Thank you. My stairwell wasn't where I got them, it was supposed to be.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so at the initial public hearing, there, there was an issue or a request that we be a little more specific in terms of the building materials. I highlighted sheet A two, and just to show that, you know, white vinyl siding, a black metal roof. We're indicating screening for the roof-mounted equipment. And the east elevation has been corrected with respect to the basement door location. So we've, we've moved that basement door closer to our outside stairs. We, we are not proposing a sidewalk from that exit to the stairs. We see it as a very infrequently used door, and so we would just ask the board's permission. We are locating a concrete pad outside of the building. In that location, so we've basically, we've gotten some consistency now between the site design and the, and the building plans as it relates to that exit from the basement. I think the, the metal roof and the vinyl siding is certainly consistent or better quality than most of the buildings in the industrial park.
Black roof? Gonna be a little warm.
I think it'll be a striking architectural feature, I think it'll be very nice and crisp-looking.
One of the primary reasons we wanted to have the discussion tonight and, and not just continue is related to the parking lot and the, the review from, from Charlie. You know, he, he, I met with Charlie a couple of days after the last planning board meeting, the first hearing. Charlie had some excellent reasons for having us consider revising that left parking lot to a single entrance with spaces on either side. I guess I would, I would say if this wasn't a medical office building, we would be receptive to those suggestions. We feel that being medical office, it's extremely important to have drop-off capability, easy in, easy out. You know, there's, whether it's dental or just medical office, people will be getting dropped off for their appointment, and basically they'll wanna, you know, leave somebody there for an hour, come pick me up when you, you know, when you're done. So, you know, we're, a lot of the other aspects of Mr. Rowley's review, we, we are accommodating the sidewalk across the front. We added some lighting for the primary entrances. A lot of the drainage concerns, we're taking care of in terms of erosion protection, issues with the rain gardens in the front and so forth, but I think tonight, one of the biggest things we would come away with is, is if we could get a determination from the planning board that, that the two entrance layout is, is acceptable. Then we're in real good shape to button this thing up in the next day or two. If, for whatever reason, there was a strong opinion on the single entrance, I think the result would be, we would maintain that, and we would add parking, and we would have to create a turnout spot. So that anyone coming in could still drop off, but they would have to go to the back of the parking lot, or unless there was an open space, and do a three-point turn and leave. You know, our preference is very much to keep the layout of the parking lot the way it is.
Only thing I would add, that we do a lot of medical facilities, and it's undetermined the occupant of that side of the building at the moment, but most every medical practice serves, serves the elderly community, infirm community. A dead-end situation in a parking like this is really something we really try to avoid, it's just a hard situation if you're faced with backing up, any, any tricky kind of backing up. So I just think it's hopefully a safer situation we're proposing, we understand the reasons why, you might not want two driveways, but from the safety of the occupants and users of the building, I think we've really strictly in our practice tried to avoid this situation. It would be caused by a single driveway.
Is there anything to be gained by making them one-way and shrinking them a little? Instead of twenty-four feet wide? Making in and out on each side, or is that? I mean, the appearance is gonna be pretty much the same, you're just shrinking the width of the driveway, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a better compromise, frankly, than having to back up, because at least you could carry on, and-
I'm just wondering if it would help you flow any, that's all.
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, it's tough enforcement-wise on a private parking lot, you know, you can call it, you can stripe it, you can sign it, and you can-
They're still gonna come in the wrong way, I get it.
If they want, if, you know, only if they want, and, and it is currently at least a very low-traffic road. But, you know, I mean, twenty-foot wide with in and outs, twenty feet wide, you could probably still do it two-way, but.
Did flatten out the elevation on the back of the building, forest retaining walls, be added here?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
The grade on the back?
Yes, sir.
Last time you were here?
Oh, yes.
Right, so this is flattened out now, so is it forest retaining walls to the right and left?
There, yes, there are retaining walls, again, so the east elevation on, on their plan, basically, we, we put the, the grade at the bottom of the door, we moved the door, so that, that's consistent. The, the lines on the side, we, we, we have retaining walls starting at those stairs and going across the back, that, that's retaining all. So, you know, those, those lines on the side of the east elevation, they really, they really aren't depicting, they're kinda unnecessary, I guess, actually.
What's unnecessary?
Or you could, yeah, you could say those, those are the rows of the block, sure. Two different firms.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna say it could be, it should be, you have a slope there, and you're not showing it right. And we beat this to death the last time we were here, and we're gonna beat it again to death tonight. You have a doorway on a flat surface, on each corner, there's a hill, there's, there's a wall, and you're not showing it.
Again, the importance of the east elevation is to depict the east elevation of the proposed building. If it, if it would make you happier, we could just label those as retaining walls on, one on either side.
There you go.
Okay.
And you make it work, because what you're showing doesn't work.
Well, this is, this is what needs to work, and this is what shows you what the building's gonna look like, so.
Go, if, if you go back to that sheet that's on the board, four nine, you look at your building, you're still showing a stairway on the left-hand side of that building. You look on your A one, the stairway is where it should be on the other side, because one side's a slab and the other side's a basement, right?
Correct, one side's a slab, the other side's the basement. Again, if, if-
That stairway on that picture there is wrong.
Regardless of-
Well, this-
Regardless of the floor, the stairway's still gonna be there.
Not there.
It's, it's gonna be here, that's where we're proposing to put it, we've added some steps to account for the grade change, one of Charlie's comments.
It doesn't make sense, George, if you look at A one, look at your other, other slabs.
Is it the left side of the building, this slab?
Slab on the right-hand side, right?
Slab is on the left-hand side.
Yeah, I think we actually, in the initial public hearing, it was just-
They haven't changed these drawings at all yet, Mike.
Okay, because we, I think we brought that up last time.
Yeah, you did.
Well, again, so what I had given as a reason at the first hearing was that there's just a little bit more room on this side from the fifty-foot no-touch to the wetland than on this side. And so even though the basement is on coastal orthodontic side, we've located the stairs there in order to stay away from the fifty-foot no-touch.
So they're gonna come out the door, and they're gonna walk across the whole back of the building to get out of there?
It's, it's a code requirement to have an exit from that basement, they will, every single day, maybe, be going in and out of the basement internally. They have no plans to have-
They have no plans to have any customers, deliveries. There's no need for it other than to have an egress from a basement, you know, to comply with the code.
Question on A2, architectural A2. There's cross-sections shown on the bottom, two different side cross-sections. There's one for a window and one for a door. What's that extra little detail is different? I'm wondering what it refers to in terms of...
It's probably correct. Just it's, it's just a slice off of an AutoCAD drawing that's more complex and probably just an example of a door versus a window. Is that your question?
Right.
This is not intended to be a complete set of architectural drawings. It's for aesthetics. We're not yet at the building permit stage, so we haven't been authorized to do architectural drawings.
Could I please, on A2 again?
Yes.
You, there's a note, possible screen, C-note. Where is the note?
And there's another note on the lower left and it says the screen, if equipment, screen if equipment is mounted on the roof. So we're saying if any, that's the lower-left manual. So we're agreeing to screen anything that's on the roof from view.
Okay.
That's presuming, again, we're way early in the design process, so we're not sure we're gonna put units on the roof, but if the aesthetic question come up, we're willing to screen them.
If you do put them on the roof, could you consider putting them towards the center? Where the screen is placed, it's right in your front facade and it isn't shown on the north elevation that... I don't think I see it on the north elevation. But would it not be less visible? But the purpose of it is to shield the equipment, correct?
That's the only reason it would be there.
So if the equipment is more centrally located in your roof, then that, they and the equipment and the screen would be probably not visible at all from grade level.
That's very possible, depending on how far back you are. You won't see it anyway, but...
Well, but the way it is drawn here, it's right at the edge of the roof, so you would see it.
I think the reason it's drawn that way is just to give you an illustration of the worst case.
No, I understand, but if you look at the bottom left...
I don't think that's our, yeah, I don't think we had...
If you look at the bottom-left section, it's right at the edge. I understand it's preliminary.
It's our ability, we wanna be proud of it. We're probably not gonna put the screen there.
And what material would it be?
The material of the screen? Well, again, I'm hard-pressed to tell you...
Okay, but so this is something that we'll see at another time?
In the building department process. We just haven't even got close. We're just simply aesthetically trying to give you our presentations in response to your question, that's all. So the truth is, we probably won't push for rooftop units, but if that's the most efficient way, we will and at that point we'll screen them. And if this is your only bite at that apple, I certainly would accept a condition or would suggest you put a condition on suggesting that we come back to you if you wanna see the final version of this.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Happy to do that. It's just simply, we're not sure. We can't commission the mechanical design at this point. We're just too early in the process.
Okay, but so we'll get a chance to see it when you decide?
Absolutely.
And then the, what is the white vinyl siding?
Again, a representation of a possible choice of material. I think it gives you an idea of a clapboard type of look. Most likely it would be that or it certainly would look similar, maybe something like a semiticious clap, but it would not be a wooden clap. So I think it's just represented as a look.
Because vinyl is not one of the approved materials. That's why I ask you.
Well, certainly then you should take exception to if it's not acceptable. And we'd be happy to remove that and change it to a non-vinyl.
Thank you. Also, do you have any idea now how tall the solar screens are, the solar panels are?
Yeah, really, I really don't. I think today, I'll just give you a little anecdotal. I have on my building, they're laying flat, even though they're not an ideal sun angle. I think they've just improved that technology a lot, so you don't have to necessarily, even though they're better if they're at the perfect angle, if aesthetics are a consideration. And I think Dr. Olivero would be concerned as well. I think the goal would be to not have them be visible, just simply to do the job they can do laying flat.
I think you can put them at a lower angle now with a...
I think you can.
Too much loss.
They work pretty well, yeah. So I don't think it would be our goal to have that screen and I don't think it would be our goal to show the units and it wouldn't be our goal to show the solar panels. I think he's very concerned about an aesthetically pleasing building and hopefully you'll love it.
Well, the way you depict the condenses, it probably wouldn't be visible from the street, from the ground, anyway.
But we just wanted to be honest about it since it's pure elevation, even though you'd be seeing it at an angle you might not see it, but...
Yeah, we're pretty close, Mr. Chairman, to Recovery Road. You know, it's at the minimum 20-foot setback. It'd be real difficult for anybody to see from that, certainly not from Recovery Road. Opposite the building is a parking lot for the other, I believe it's a medical rehab office, but that's in that direction. So maybe somebody in the parking lot. I think, I don't think it would take very much additional height to...
The parking lot across the street, does that have one entrance in it or two?
It's got a circular turnaround in front of the building.
But you're up further than that, though, aren't you? Closer to...
Yeah, this is the northernmost parking lot entrance to that facility. And then somewhere over here is their building and the circular turnaround and they've got more parking inside.
So that parking field, I guess the easterly one is, got a single entrance or two?
I don't know if you can see it on the cover sheet or not.
Yeah, it looks like two.
Anybody else I know on your plan, it's the reduced ones, it's kind of top.
He said there's a door here.
Looks like two entrances just further apart than what you've proposed.
Well, so it's really...
I'm just talking the parking field to the... There's like, if you look at the building across the street, there's basically two parking fields, one closer to 195 and one up this way, which would...
Correct.
Directly across from you.
So the circular drop-off in front of that building would also, you know, lead you into that southerly parking lot. And then the entrance that's shown on our plan is for the northerly parking lot. So basically, our building is facing their northerly parking lot and that's the entrance there, so... Those are the people that might be able to see the rooftop.
No, I was just thinking, I think they have two entrances in their parking fields. They're further apart because it's a bigger piece of property.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think there's no question that we'd be willing to reduce them to 20 feet wide if it, you know, I mean, I think the only benefit is somewhat of a reduction of impervious surface, but I think, you know, I think people are still gonna use it how they choose to use it, not necessarily a counterclockwise one-way in and out. Yeah, we just don't wanna be dead-ended because of the desire to drop off.
So what were your seeking direction on now?
Well, that's...
The driveways and anything else?
Well, we, again, so one of the comments from Mr. Rowley was regarding whether we did or did not need GeoGrid tiebacks for the retaining wall. We're trying to reach out, we don't have an answer for you as yet. But the concern is if the retaining wall, since it's a large block but it's 10 feet tall, if it needed tiebacks, would there be a conflict between those tiebacks and our subsurface roof runoff system? And so for now, what we're saying, we have a 15-foot separation from the retaining wall to the infiltration system. The system could be adjusted, but I mean, I think we're feeling somewhat confident that we have more than 10 feet of space for the GeoGrid. And it is another item that is gonna require the stamp of a structural engineer and a submission with a stamp to the building department. So rather than, you know, trying to make a definitive answer on the design of that wall right now, we'd like to just live under the same conditions of if we get approval for what we're saying we want to construct and there's a change for any reason, we would have to come back and as we did with the piece of land, we would have to come back and ask you if that's a minor modification, is it a major modification? But we feel like we've got, we're in the ballpark, we're having 15 feet away from that wall with the drainage system. And so we wanna renew our planning and conservation approvals before we go to the full build and building permit level design.
Now, how are you addressing where the building sits partially? On one side, you're gonna have a basement wall. What are you going to, what are you using to retain the slab side? Is that also gonna, that basement wall gonna go all the way across? You show the retaining wall at the parking lots, but...
I think, yeah, I think you have to have a full wall in both cases. One's got earth behind it, one has air behind it.
Yeah.
So, yes. Similar thing, we need a structural engineer to design the reinforcing for that. So we certainly will have a structural engineer, there'll be stamped drawings. We've consulted him orally. It's hard to give you an oral representation. You know, he thinks the 15 feet's well more than we need for the retaining restraints, but it's just only anecdotal until we give you a stamped drawing. It's just a matter of sequence of events and having him go on board when we do the foundation design and formally pay him to do the work.
So when do you think you'll have the information? Well, on a plan?
You know, I've written the response letter. You know, we, it's the addition of a couple of light poles. Basically, we're waiting for an updated, the photometrics on that. And so once we have that, we're gonna put it on the landscaping and lighting plan. Here's our landscaping and lighting plan. So basically, the, above on this side of the plan, we'll put that on, so that'll put that to bed. You know, if I get that tomorrow, then, you know, it's just production time. So, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, we would be, if you want 12 sets or whatever it is that you want. I mean, I guess I would ask Mr. Rowley if you feel that, you know, I guess we should confirm with the addition of the concrete sidewalk in the front, that, you know, would change the amount of impervious going to that one particular rain garden. I can run that calculation. I know we have plenty of free board at the moment, but, you know, and I guess, you know, if you concur that... So basically, instead of having those paved waterways here, we're just gonna let the half of Recovery Road paved. Right now, it's just wandering flat. I was out there Saturday and there's just a long, little tiny puddle on either side of the road, but, so we would let that, we would accept that rainwater without a paved waterway. And so basically, it'll just come in a little slower and over the entire length of the rain garden. And obviously, you know, when we memorialize this and resubmit it, Charlie may have other comments or, you know, whatever it is. I can't hold you to just tonight's presentation, but, yeah, I'm thinking this week, Wednesday, Thursday. I mean, we're not under the gun, so to speak, but that would be the best we could do, I guess. Still, we have not filed with conservation yet because, you know, we wanna make sure that the planning board is happy with the site design.
You are showing a paved waterway on your plan, so...
So there is one that I didn't eliminate and that's the one that's on our site. And I think we definitely need that one to get the water in because we have Cape Cod berm. There is no berm in Recovery Road. The only reason there's any puddling is just because of the buildup of sand over the years in the shoulder, so the water just kinda sits there, it works its way through the sand. We've got a little physical low point there and so that's how we're getting our driveway into that rain garden.
This was the first submittal.
So you do have a better transition from Recovery Road into the...
Well, it's gonna do what it's doing now, except there won't be that buildup of sand. It'll be, basically, it'll be a new lawn or new grass in the shoulder of the road and so it'll just flow in. Once it, you know, any kind of depth of water, it'll go into our designated areas.
And when do you think you'll have the plans wrapped up?
Well, if I get that lighting data, I'd like to do it this week. There's no, like I said, there's no danger. You guys aren't meeting again until November, so, you know, there's no... If I get it in this week, I don't, you know, I could put it in the following week and I'd still end up with whatever your first meeting in November is.
And the engineering details for the walls and all that is all gonna be?
Well, again, we are asking to not have to provide a stamped by a structural, we're asking relief from a structural engineer at this point.
Mr. Chairman, there's no reason why they couldn't do a little bit of research and figure out how much GeoGrid would be used for the style of block they're gonna use, determine whether it's 10 feet or 15 feet or five feet, and document it and say, that's what it is. It's a part of the approval process that they should be able to do. It doesn't take that much research to figure it out. You don't necessarily have to wait for a stamped plan to go to the building inspector for a structural design, not after that. Should be a simple answer.
Then we'll give you the answer.
Does the board have any other current concerns or questions?
Perhaps we'll just wait till you come back with more finished drawings. Some of the line work or some of the elements that are on the drawings, they're difficult to understand how they relate to each other. I think we'll just wait until you come back.
What, are you referring to the architectural plans?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think, you know, I mean, we're sort of in a little bit of a pickle where so the zoning, basically, so in the industrial zone, it requires certain materials, but you can get a waiver from them, from the entity that no longer exists. And, I mean, I do wanna make sure that, you know, that we're giving you the right answer and you don't have a false expectation.
I don't wanna take your, the board's time. It's just that it's difficult, since you are showing these images, it's difficult to... you are showing this, these images, they, it's difficult to put them together to get an image of the building. So the outriggers, for example, that there are, that you show, I don't see them appearing in, in other elevations to explain what they do unless I'm just missing something. I don't think it's important at this time, though, I.
Okay. Entrance over, yeah, it's just the entrance.
That's all right.
I mean, certainly a full set of architetchals will come, be forthcoming, and we could do a rendering, I suppose. It's just that we're sort of, I think, been into the process of planning and site design for a long time, and the client is, you know, been in town many years, he'd like to move here, and just the sequence of events, I think, just suggests, let's not do a full set of architetchals before we're certain that we're okay with the site. But, but if you wanna withhold any, put a restriction that you wanna see the full set, happy to give it to you, just rather not do them before conservation approval and the planning board approval.
Well, just be aware that they need, that, that they don't convey the complete image, and that's okay, when you get it, you will see it.
You will.
Anything further?
No, sir, nope, we, we let you proceed with your meeting, and appreciate the time.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment, if I may. You had asked whether or not they could possibly make the driveway for that smaller parking area one way and narrow it up. I think it could be done. Not sure whether reducing from twenty-four to twenty would do it, but the purpose behind my suggestion at the very beginning of this was they've got to relocate a hydrant, they've also got to relocate a utility pole. In addition to that, it would take about twenty-four hundred square feet of paving out of the whole site by not having that double entrance. I don't have a problem with the two entrances if they feel that in order to serve their, their patients or whoever it is, their customers, to have a drop-off point, that, I don't care about that.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be nice to see whether or not they could come up with a, an alternative to this, which would reduce it a little bit, and it would at the same time eliminate the necessity and the cost of relocating the hydrant and the pole. Those are not inexpensive items. So I was just offering that as a suggestion, but it would be nice to see if they could do that, it would save them some money and still give them what they want.
Well, I think that it, it should be said in response to that comment, that I think we're well aware of that expense and certainly would like to avoid it. In fairness, we much appreciate your sentiment. However, the building has to have utility and it has to be safe, and the liability of somebody getting hurt or backing up, an elderly person backing up and hitting something or hitting someone is so down, is such a concern that I think that, given their, the engineer's ability to do what you just suggested, certainly that's worth looking at, but we'd like not to have a dead end, that really would be a concern, and so.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting a dead end is necessary.
Exactly, so I appreciate your sentiment. If it can be done, I guess, give it a whack, but I don't know if you have any room to do it.
Well, the, I, the only problem I would see with twenty-four width would be wintertime, snow, and it's gonna narrow it down even further, so. I just put that out there for discussion to see if it.
Yeah, it's such a short distance.
If it made things flow better, you know.
Four feet, four feet on either side, and it's, and you're only, you're talking about, I think, maybe it's forty-five feet long each, each one, you know, so.
You could possibly spare the moving of the hydrant, but I don't think you're gonna avoid that utility pole. Is this, yeah, does this got sprinklers in it?
No, sir, no, we're managing the size of the building to not have to provide the sprinklers inside.
Continue to thirteenth.
Yes, would you like me to assign the continuance to, you, the first meeting in November?
What is the first one?
Thirteenth.
If someone would care to make a motion?
I would make a motion, we continue this hearing until the first meeting in November, which is the thirteenth.
And there's a second, seven o'clock. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Great, thanks.
Well, we have a discussion on a letter of support from the Open Space Plan, but I think it's much too long, I don't think we can support it. Is that why you hid a strong armistice in signing your support letter? Let the record show.
We're looking for letters of support for the 2017-2024 Open Space and Recreation Plan update, and the request is to the board to endorse it.
Well, to change it, yeah.
Is there a second? To endorse the Open Space and Recreation Plan?
What, to deny it? Yeah, we'll second. Who's driving, her or Alan?
Either.
You have a second? You're well set.
It is online, did you send it to everybody or just?
Send it to everybody.
Yeah, no, that's why I said it's.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Small and Mike Billson. See correspondence. We do need some decisions on the town meeting articles.
That's right.
Yes, no, maybe, yes, yes, no, maybe.
You have this one in your, your bag?
I'm trying to distinguish what the difference is.
The, the difference between the current draft and the previous draft is that the large ground-mounted solar energy facilities are, instead of prohibited in the R-130 and R-60 district, are under site plan review, so that there's a more elaborate review of the, of the design of these systems.
It doesn't say site plan review with who? You wanna add planning to that, or?
The, we can add planning to that. I believe that the site plan review section specifies the planning board unless there's a special permit for the Board of Appeals. But to be clear, we can specify this planning board. In addition, the, the clearing of vegetation is in section 594.3, six, item six. Noted that the clear cutting of trees and natural vegetation shall be kept to a minimum necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the solar photovoltaic facility, rather than having a restriction on the timeframe of five years for the clearing of vegetation. In addition, on page three, under the design standards, 594.1, subsection three, four, and five, which are the setbacks. Previously, this said that the fencing and vegetation should be not less than fifty feet from a residential development, based on the design standards of the zoning bylaw that says that the maximum separation between incompatible uses, industrial and residential, is fifty feet. However, because there was some concern about the visibility, complete separation, what we did was add that it may be more depending on visibility because of the density of vegetation and topography with earthen berms and landscape plattings according to Article 10 of the landscaping of the zoning bylaw.
Wouldn't, wouldn't earthen berms and landscaping allow you to go less, not more?
You'd have the minimum fifty feet.
And then it says maybe more depending on earthen berms and landscaping, which I would think would reduce the buffer if the berms isolating. Know what I mean?
Yeah.
A birm would, you would think at face value that would allow you to, or cause suicide,
well, the, I don't think we want it to be less than fifty feet.
Okay.
Yes, Emmanuel.
Is it possible to make it more of a bite? The, the main portion leaves it, doesn't, doesn't specify at whose discretion or who can decide. Could we, could we say something like, it cannot be less than fifty feet and maybe more at the request, just as I, the suggestion, at the request of the planning board, which request shall not be subject to appeal, something that make, gives it more of a, more control? Because I, I, in rereading it, the fifty feet and maybe more, I, I think, is, is kind of open and not sufficiently binding. Just if we could add some, some wording that could be more if requested by the planning board, and then add that that request shall not be subject to appeal, I don't know if that, I'm not a lawyer, but.
Well, we can, we can say that at the discretion of the permit granting authority since.
Well, that's better, sure.
And, and specify that the sole discretion of the permit granting authority.
Yeah, sure, that would make it, I think, more, more forceful, give us more control.
In 594.3, section eight, the fencing, you scratched the line through vinyl coated or other decorative type or equivalent type fence, well, if you scratch that out, it doesn't make any sense.
I had a discussion with Emmanuel earlier today about the fencing, and his suggestion was that possibly having a wooden fence has a more appropriate separation. And Emmanuel's handed me some photos of, images of, of eight-foot-high fences that have, that could, could possibly even be vinyl, but are, are, have a wooden look to them. So the idea of having something that, rather than the chain link fence, have something a little bit more in character with the, with the residential neighborhoods.
And that's fine where you're close to a residential neighborhood, but in some cases it's kind of a waste when you're out in the middle of the woods somewhere.
Yeah, if you, if you're three hundred feet off the road, like the Blue Wave, like sections of the Blue Wave are, that.
It says fencing that is visible from right of way or residence.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I don't, I don't know how the board feels, but we, we could direct them to option A, B, or C, or, or, or an approved equal.
Mm-hmm.
But I strongly recommend we do not allow chain link in residential areas or, or, the image of the vinyl coated chain link is also not very attractive. You know, there's, there are wonderful examples of fences that would be very acceptable in a residential area, I think. How do, how to control that?
Yeah, but I think just, the language needs to be corrected a little better than just scratching out vinyl coated or other decorative type.
Fence acceptable to the reviewing board.
Well, the experience we had with the galvanized one, from, it looked like a prison from.
Yeah, absolutely.
When the sun glistens on it, so the coating, that particular installation is, if I remove from any residential use.
Do any of the existing facilities in town have security fences around them?
I think they all do.
They all do, yeah.
But I don't think it.
I don't know. It won't be a white vinyl fence, no.
Okay.
The earthen birm that they've put in there is gonna be planted, densely planted.
But that's not for the purpose of security?
No, there'll be a fence behind that. I'll find out what the fence is gonna be.
The fence doesn't have to be more than six feet. If the, the panels or the structures are at least fifty feet away and they're not taller than six, eight feet themselves, right?
Right.
You wouldn't, a six-foot fence would be plenty to see, to conceal them.
Of course, it depends on the, the topography of the.
Of course, of course.
But this is using the language of security, you're not concealing your security.
Well, the point is to conceal also, is it not?
Maybe you should just add, it says all ground-mounted solar facilities shall be fenced for security and, and from screening from residential areas.
I'm sorry, that again was?
Where it says shall be fenced for screening for security, I mean.
Fence for security.
For security, just add, and screening from residential areas.
I think one of the. I think one of the concepts here, though, is that it becomes a, is treated somehow, either it's black vinyl, so it disappears into the landscape, or is a more decorative type of fencing.
R60, the size of the...
Because it's visible.
Why is that crossed out?
Crossed out so that it'd be discussed.
Large ground-mounted solar here.
We can leave it in as it is.
Yeah, leave it in. Well, just...
My understanding is correct.
Instead of our equivalent type, since you haven't... Shall be of a type of fence acceptable to the reviewing board, rather than...
Shall be a type of fence.
Just to make it make sense.
But why, it should be a no.
So leave it, leave the section crossed out.
It's just, I'll ask Ken.
Or equivalent and say, fencing that is visible from the right of way or residence is, shall be a type of fence acceptable to the reviewing board. All fencing shall be designed to blend into the landscape.
My memories.
And on the use chart, I would like to see a no on institutional and industrial. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
We don't have a lot of industrial land left in the town, actually. So the question is whether or not we allow it to be used for the purposes of a solar farm.
I would like to see those two categories changed to a no, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but...
Institutional covers the hospital and the municipal complex of schools and town hall.
Both tables, no?
That's my thoughts, I don't know how the board feels.
Yeah, I'm going to, I think, I think... Something's weird there.
Is that your fence library?
Yeah, this is what Emmanuel had pulled together.
Ken, I have a question, maybe a dumb question.
No question is a dumb question.
I'm good at it. 594.1, point one, for the large ground-mounted solar facilities, it's required that they be sited on three acres, 130,000-plus square feet. So how can they be in the R60 zone permitted?
You'd have to have a parcel larger than the minimum required by the zoning district, allowed by the zoning district. The zoning district allows you to have lesser sized lot for the purposes of residential development. But what we're saying with this bylaw is that you would have to have it larger for the minimum size.
So, so there's a three-acre lot in our R60 zone then?
Right.
Can't we make that a no?
Is that enough?
Can you make it a no?
Can't we make it no in this R60 zone? It used to be no in this, in the other version, just a thought and just a recommendation.
And should you strike the, on that same thing, should you strike the word large from that, so there's no confusion?
No, that's how we were defining it. The section has the use table, it has the design standards, and it has, the third part is definitions in the last page.
If somebody comes in with a small ground-mounted solar facility, what's the verdict?
It's anything that would be less than, a minimum name plate capacity of 250 kilowatts DC would be the difference between a ground, a large ground-mounted solar and a small system.
So would a small system be section 340, onsite solar energy?
Correct. So you have to, looking at the size of the, of the projects that have come through here, the, the smallest has been 600 kilowatts DC. Most of them are 2,000, 1,000, 1,000, 3 and 1/2 thousand. And the Blue Wave project has, adds up to about 12 megawatts. The EverSource project on Seth Toby Road is 4,800 kilowatts.
What are they going to do there, just put a little plastic fence up or something? That's it? I missed that. I did, I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, the requirements are the fencing, the earthen berm, and the landscaping on top of the earthen berm.
Thank you.
Couple of pine trees.
I got plenty of caution tape in the truck if you need it.
So the canopy mounted system is going to be considered large-scale ground-mounted?
Correct.
That'd be kind of hard to fence a canopy-mounted system.
It would.
How high is the canopy?
Canopies are usually high enough to, yeah, more than drive under.
14 feet plus the...
Can I speak to that a little bit because I'm in the new SMART plan, my name is Linda Rinta, I'm a resident of Wareham.
Would you like to come forward?
Come on up.
Mr. Mike, so Bob doesn't yell at me.
My name is Linda Rinta, and I'm a resident of Wareham, we're cranberry growers in West Wareham. And we are exploring the opportunity to put some solar panels behind the cranberry bogs, they wouldn't be one of your visual problems, but we would, we're also looking, under the new SMART plan that the state has put out, they're almost requiring farms to put up canopies. We don't want to put up a canopy. But that's because to get the agricultural adder, to allow you to farm underneath that or within the panels, and be compensated with an SREC for that, because under the new SMART plan, it's actually proposed, but it's, it's going to be the new set of regulations. The SRECs goes down for most smaller systems, that's why when you see these big systems come in, I mean, that's the attraction for them. To compensate for that, so that you have an income to support your farming habit, you have to, almost have to, down here in southeastern Mass, put up a canopy. We're actually trying to fight that, because it doesn't really make a lot of sense for us. Because if you read the rules, on one hand, you have to put up the canopy, you have, for an agricultural adder, which allows you to farm within the array, you have to either be generating the electricity for your farm and use it all, which most of us are too small to do that, or you are allowed to displace your electrical load up to 200%. And even, but not more than 200%. Even that isn't, because if you're a cranberry farmer, most of your electric, most of your power load is not electricity, we don't use a lot of electricity. So that, our third choice is to have a building mounted or that, a canopy. And they would encourage you to raise sheep under the canopy. We're not interested in raising sheep and...
Man.
When I complained about coyotes, the Department of Agriculture told me to get dogs, I have a dog. But that's not my point. My point is, under the new SMART plan regs, there's opportunity for farmers to support their farms by generating some, and I don't, can't quite figure out, under the canopy it would be, we'd be large power developers, but I don't, I don't think that we really are large. We can be out of sight, we can tuck away. It does allow us to hang on to our farms, which is a good thing. We do need to be able to farm within that canopy, and for lots of reasons. Because for one thing, the assets that farmers have is their land. And so if you enter a long-term lease with somebody and you don't have the use of that land, then you lose your ability to borrow against that, you lose your, you lose your asset base. So we really need to be able to continue to farm within that, and there's lots of things we can do. If we were to pursue this, and we are in the exploratory stage, which is why I'm here tonight, to find out what your regulations, how that, how that, this kind of use would fit. Because you have a lot of small cranberry farms in this town that will be looking for ways to be able to support the cranberry habit. And what I do, I grow beech grass right now, and I market beech grass to communities. Last year, we sold to Coney Island. It's one thing you can grow in sand, but you can also, can grow between rows, not in, I took a look at EverSource's array, and I don't think there's much that could grow between those rows, but I think if you, and that's part of the Department of Agriculture's intent with the adder, it's called an agricultural adder, if you read the new set of rules, and I don't think they've promulgated yet. It has an agricultural adder, and so you have to be creative about your design in order to be able to grow things and do things, including sheep. The two things that we're hoping we can do are run an apiary within the, within an array, which is far away from any residence. It's actually on a shared dike we have with a neighbor. And the other idea that we, is to continue growing beech grass between rows of arrays. I don't know whether it's going to work. I don't even know whether we're going to, we're going to get off ground zero, as far as when I, when I hear how far along everybody else's designs are, we aren't even got, we're not even there yet. We're trying to figure out how we can fit into the new SMART plan that the state's put out. And I would think, and I would hope, that some of the other farms and other open spaces in this town that are appropriate, not, not where you drive, not, not a viewscape, we're not looking, I don't want to look at a viewscape. But there are lots of places behind that can accommodate with some creative design, can accommodate that land use. And so I, when you spoke about having it appropriate to the approval of the permitting authority, makes the best sense to me, because you would take into consideration for whatever, whatever project comes in as a project by project. But the canopy is something that the Department of Agriculture and Energy in Massachusetts is highly supporting that, in fact, to the point...
They're supporting it because all these developers are cleaning up on these big facilities.
It may be.
They're taking their tax credits, they're taking their money right out of it, it sits there. Canopy thing's a good idea for a small area, but you know, you get some, some farmers have several acres and they want to do something to be green and all that, it's not the cost of putting all that canopy up and all...
But we can't even do it here, because honestly, for us to raise a canopy, we would have to, you can't use concrete for, I mean, on one hand, on the performance standards, it doesn't allow you to fill, because they want to preserve farmland, so they don't want you to lose farmland, therefore you can't use concrete, you can't fill, you can't change the topography, you can't put in pilings. How could you, in sandy soil, how could we possibly support a canopy?
What grows in the shade?
Well, you can do quite a lot in a shade, but, and if you lift the canopy, I don't know. To me, that, it seems a little bit ridiculous, but we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten, we haven't gotten that one down.
If you follow the credits, it's constantly changing. First they were pushing roof-mounted, then they went to large roof-mounted, then they went to small ground mounted. So they're always changing their emphasis on where they put, two years from now, they might say, you know, they might go back to roof-mounted, they may stop the credits altogether, you know?
Who knows? But at any rate, I guess I wanted you to be aware of the fact that there are other power, there are other pressures promoting some of these structures in ways that are, you know, like the canopy. And I don't, I don't think the canopy works for us down here in southeastern Mass unless you're going to, I guess, park cars, I don't know. But then you can't farm under that, so. But we are looking at ways, and we're exploring ways, that perhaps we could take advantage of an opportunity. It has to be worthwhile, and so far, they've taken the worthwhile out, at least for landowners. We're hoping that we could insert that back with the ag adder, but that may or may not be.
What I'd like to do is, as you develop the program with the state, or see how the program develops, come back and give us perspective about where you're going with it, so we can, so we can understand.
I'm not understanding the program. We're little, we're, I'm trying to fit within, find a niche within the program to make it work for our farm, that's what I'm trying to do. And it's very difficult, I think you spoke to...
Fred Under.
Yes, somebody that we, we've been working with in trying to work this out, and he encouraged me to come to learn tonight about how this regulation would, and that's what I'm here for, and I'm encouraged that you are putting together a regulation, I think we should have one. And I, but I would hope that you would be mindful, that there are ways we can have solar energy in the town without making Toby Road look like the glitterati, you know?
Right.
Do you want to play Growers Association?
I do.
Have you surveyed the association members to see what the...
We've actually, we have been working with this, but honestly, we vary in size, obviously 80 ma piece is, is the 900, I shouldn't say that, is the, is the big, is the big grower. And we have many, many little growers, in fact, most of the growers in our Growers Association are under 15 acres, so most of them are small. And small is very difficult, you know, to try to find your niche in some of these, there is great opportunity for larger growers who have a lot of, a resource base. It's a little more difficult for small growers, but, but that isn't to say that we're looking to take advantage of that, we'd like to keep farming. And, you know, you have to be creative to do that.
Do you know what the zoning is, where you're located?
Oh, gosh, you know, I do, and I have forgot.
I think it's MR30, George.
What is that? What is...
It's MR30, which is multiple residential 30 up there, I think so.
Is that where we are? I thought we were ag, water resource...
I think it's yours.
You're up in 58 there.
Yeah, we are, we're north of 495 though. What's north, north of 495?
I don't know if I got, copied them.
I thought we were... Something else, but that's okay.
Who wants to keep the sheep craters?
I'm not, yeah, actually, I did keep sheep for a long time when my kids were little, but I'm not interested in sheep.
But you know, your feed networks...
I'm interested in bees, we need bees, and it's a good place to have them, because we can put them where they're not going to bother any people. There are some advantages. Actually, I think, Charlie, do we live in Carver? No, we don't really, but we're, we're in that funny little point in Wareham that sticks into Carver. Sometimes we make believe we live in Carver.
I want to, forgive me, when you say canopy, what do you mean?
Well, the way it's been, the way I've seen the description is it's like a carport, it's the best way I can describe it. It's not a building, it's a...
It's a roof.
It's a roof.
You can drive by it.
It's a roof, it's a roof without a building.
Okay. As I was going to say, go to the cape, yeah.
Go to the hair station, go to, I mean, the Speedway.
And you farm under, I mean...
There's a canopy at most of the gas stations.
What's the, what's the purpose of it?
It's to allow you to, allow you to use the land underneath for parking, and at the same time have a solar.
Across, they would like us to farm sheep.
We were having that discussion tonight about adding canopies at the water department to offset their.
Well, you could do that, cause you could, you have equipment to park, I mean, if you were looking to park.
Exactly, if you go to Upper Cape Regional, they, their parking lot is a canopy.
At any rate. What am I?
This is Upper Cape.
Thomas Land Row. They took them back for a lot of the.
Yeah.
Thomas Land Row.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, apparently you can grow sheep under theirs.
Should be doing the open road.
But there's an indication, there's an example of, agricultural use that's probably removed from neighbors, but it wouldn't be eligible because. Well, they, they could go as a small system. And be allowed as a right.
But I don't think you would qualify as your small system, but I also think, I would hope that the developer would come before you, and I would hope that you would hold them to the standard, that, um, you know, we, we need to, we present, you know, I'm, I'm not looking for a, a shortcut. I just wanna see how we can fit within what you design. So, we do need to cut trees, and by the way, agriculture needs cut trees. Well, thank you.
I don't know how many acres her. They say most of the cranberry grows at fifteen acres or less, or a lot of them are.
The ones, the ones that are pushing the cattle, the bigger guys, they get rid, they saw all this sand out of town first, and then they put a solar farm in. Those are the guys that are shaking a dog's tail. They're the little guys, little guys, we're all drowning. I'm in Middleborough, by the way, John.
It's still a hundred acres, isn't it?
Yeah.
Can you put canopies over cranberry bog and expect them to grow?
Put one in Cav, or Cavaseno.
They're not growing cranberry, cranberries there anymore, are they?
Uh, well, they're supposed to maintain the vines.
In between all of the posts?
Yeah.
So, if we can, if, if you can agree that with the changes you've recommended, that we can have this endorsed, vote this for town meeting, do you feel comfortable with it as it is?
Well, it puts something in place, you know, we can always go back and modify and tweak it or whatever, because ev- every time the government changes the rules, the proponents gonna come in here and circumvent it or twist it to the advantage, the big guys, the little guy's never gonna survive.
Well, you say there's.
Five, ten acres, it'll never happen.
Six freeze plants, yes, six.
I don't like lamb anyway, John.
Yeah, six.
Well, that's where the turbines were gonna go up in that area, if you remember.
You're welcome, but they didn't.
Well, you're welcome, you're the one that wanted the turbines.
Yeah, I already bought extension cords, he was gonna plug in.
I got seven thousand feet of cord, I don't have to go all the way out to, to the guy at the beginning of the road.
So, so the site plan review specify that his planning board take, put, knows prohibit large ground mounted solar energy in, in institutional and industrial district?
What about, what about the small up there? Was that figured out as well about that?
No, that, that can be uh, that can be a couple panels on the building. It becomes part of the building code review instead of zoning. So then the uh, the design standards are modified so that, it's at the sole discretion of the permit granting authority that more, more buffer may be necessary, depending on the visibility. And we'll leave in that we'll have a fencing that is visible from the right-of-way or residences shall be a type of fence acceptable to the view reviewing board. And we have the minimum capacity of two hundred and fifty kilowatts DC and a three acre minimum.
So if you have a canopy with less than two fifty, it's building code?
Right. Yeah, the uh, the bill, I confirmed with the building commissioner that he would consider canopy systems ground mounted for the purposes of the, of the zoning.
As long as, like I say, if you're gonna put it on a, in an open space, there's no reason, reason to raise it up.
Dig a hole, put them down.
You could.
This is a good example from Plimpton. Uh, you know where Cisco is? Go up Brook Street, there's a gravel pit in there. They constructed bogs, uh, it's all gravel base. Of course, the bogs were in the way, gravel base, you can do anything you want. All the solar panels are down, can't even see them. So it's, it's a good way of doing it, gives the landowner opportunity, mine owners, his property.
Take all the good sand out, right?
Yeah, well, they're doing that anyway, but you know.
Get your answers?
Yeah, I've got my answers.
Good, is that it?
Um, no, I don't think, when we held a public hearing on both the um.
Both the articles on zoning.
We had these answers to do, did we commit on the other one? Recodification one?
No, you did not.
So we need a vote on that. And whether the board supports the uh, the recodification of the zoning bylaw, if you remember that, I don't know if you have it in your packet. Yep, oh.
It was the uh, the hundred edit.
Spell check for the zoning bylaw.
The one you ran through.
Right.
Who was present for that, do you know?
We were. Two, two, two meetings ago, or a meeting ago?
Um, I believe it was September eleventh, yeah.
That's when we went through the, through the code, right?
Yeah.
So what's the board's pleasure on the, is that what you're naming that bylaw, the recodification of the?
Recodification and technical amendments.
It may be too late to bring this up, um, but this was an example tonight. I, in, in looking at the acceptable materials for, there are just, it's limiting, and, and there are really I'm sorry, I just lost my section, but um, there are some inconsistencies. Is it too late to reconstu- to do some work on that?
Well, I thought what we were gonna do, and we talked about this before, was to go through the, the design guidelines of the zoning bylaw and spend some time figuring those out.
Is it too late, or can we still do it?
Still do it, but I, I don't think we could get an article together till spring, but we can still.
All right, okay, sure.
I think that's probably beyond what was advertised on that particular one.
Yeah, to change content.
Okay. So we do it going forward?
Right.
But there are inconsistencies in those materials.
And we should, and it's pretty limiting too, and, and, and it, it makes our requests not so valid when he's got a choice of brick.
That's what I've been, that's what I've said when I shake my head sometimes, because you can ask for whatever you want, but what's in the book is what they're gonna go by.
Yeah.
We should work on that sooner than later.
Like if they refer to steel as a natural material.
Right.
And glass.
Typical of historical southern New England, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it later.
So, what's your pleasure on that, public hearing, that article? Oh no, jump out at once.
I'll second.
So your motion for?
Favorable action is up?
Favorable action.
Let's see, I was here, yeah, everybody was here but you.
Exactly, but I, I read the whole.
Mm-hmm. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good.
Do we have an article number for that?
I believe it was article twelve.
And how about the solar? We don't have a name for this either, right? Solar uh, bylaw?
Yes.
Has, has amended?
Amendments, right, has amended.
Has amended.
I have just one question, in the five ninety-five point three, the financial surety points of ground mounted solar facility shall provide either through escrow account, bond, or otherwise, some of the costs to remove in event the town must remove the installation. Does this mean we're going to be holding out to bonds for thirty years? Do you think these things have to be removed?
At least twenty years anyway, yeah.
Whose responsibility is it to maintain those bonds?
The uh.
Not this board?
No, um, one of the methodologies we're doing is having a uh, a digital calendar, a calendar program that allows us to do long-term watch and get notified of, of, of bonds coming due and, and covenants as well. All the, all the documents that are longer term than, than a lot of the board's membership.
But who?
And what we'll do, and what we've done already is to have with the surety is a recurring period in which they'll be reconsidered. Every five years or every so many years, have a reconsideration of the bond. So they can be upped or reduced, I doubt it'll be reduced, but it can be changed.
The cost of doing business, but it is the landowner who, who has to provide that surety bond? Or is it the leaseholder that's providing the panels?
I would think the person with the responsibility of the panels, but.
At least they buy and sell them, like I say, as soon as the credit's done, they get rid of.
How's, yeah, how's the contract written up, John? That equipment, ninety percent of it's leased, right?
So, yeah, just wondering if that statement, because in, in my mind, you know, Blue Wave should be responsible for that surety, but if they transfer that over ten years from now, then the successor will be responsible for maintaining that, we don't wanna.
Well, I would think the property owner would want it that way. I would think the property owner would want it that way, so if they get stuck, there's a bond out there, then clean their property up.
Right, so I think, so what I'm saying is, we, we should be protecting the property owner, in this case, and saying, that bond is being provided by the generator of power and the owner of the equipment.
That, that becomes a part of the special permit, and if there is a change of ownership, that special permit is transferred with all of the conditions that are in it to the new owner. So if the owner of the facility, not the land, but the facility, is responsible the first time around for that bond, and he sells that property, the requirement for the bond gets transferred as a part of the special permit. If it has to be rewritten, that's up to them, but he's still responsible for that, for that bond. As a part of the special permit, considerations that are written up and approved by the board. It'd be the same as in any other term of the special permit, it gets transferred to the new owner.
How does that get pleased, Charlie?
What's that?
How would that get pleased?
Well, I believe once the.
Well, what, just what Ken was saying, that if, if it's monitored and, and brought up to date every five years, then that's the way for the planning department to keep tabs on it. So it's, it's, it's gonna take a responsibility of the, the facility operator to maintain the bond and to provide evidence to say the planning board or the planning department that that bond is in place, and that, as Ken has suggested, every time, five years it gets reviewed, then the evidence comes in again, that the bond has been extended for another five years. However you get worked out, but those are the kinds of uh, details that need to be put in a special permit.
I think the best enforcement for that is the property owner, because they're gonna have the burden of decommissioning if there's no bond in place.
Well, unless they're made a party to the actual special permit, it's gonna be strictly the guy that gets the permit. Typically, it's not the landowner that gets the permit.
Yeah, but the special permit runs with the land, not with the owner.
Yes, it does, that's, that's what I'm saying, Ken, it does run with the land.
Right.
The holder of the permit is Blue Wave, for example, and they transferred it to uh, Green Elephant or whatever it is, you know, some other, some other entity, the responsibility gets transferred along with that.
Right.
How is that tied back to a legal enforcement? Is there a, a statement on the deed now? Says in the event of transfer, is it conditional?
The special permit goes on the land record, so it's on, it becomes part of the, the land title.
If the person who owns the land transfers his property to someone else, and the facility is still there, presumably it would be transferred subject to the special permit and the lease arrangement that he has with the leaseholder.
Which would imply then that the landowner has to be on the special permit. In order for it to make it to the deed, it's gotta get to the landowner, not to the utility that's leasing the use of the land.
Well, it might be the same as any other, say, a public utility, if, if I have a, an easement by, say, ever source that runs across my property, I can, I can sell that land. And the document will say it's subject to an easement held by ever source for a right-of-way. It'd be the same thing. If I sold my property to you when there was a solar farm on it, I'd sell it to you, subject to the easement or whatever rights exist within that lease that I held for that, or the, the owner of the facility held that was on my property.
Maybe that's the way you handle it, is you just put a a condition on the special permit that the leaseholder will put it in his lease that responsible for decommissioning. And let, let it be the landlord, tenant.
Yeah, between them.
Not put the burden on the town to have to babysit all these agreements.
Well, it can create another slot for somebody, we need more people in the town.
My idea is that, chilling is that these things all get abandoned, and get these graveyards of solar panels. Now, we don't know if they're gonna lose efficiency, we're saying they're gonna produce us, you know, twelve megawatts of energy, this Blue Wave. This thing starts to lose efficiency, and it's only producing fifty percent of that, ten years down the road.
I think they look at it like a twenty percent decline over thirty years.
A twenty percent decline over thirty years, but at some point you reach a low enough number that says that it's not worth operating the facility anymore. So we'll just continue to allow it to stay there and become an eyesore, and not produce anything back to the community. So, you know, and then there's the restoration of the land. You guys are clearing hundreds of acres of land to put this stuff up, and the land does not get restored now. So, I think there's a, I, you know, I don't know if this, this board has the, the ability to control it, but there's this exit strategy or termination clause that goes in here, and here's how this thing gets closed up. None of, none of which can happen unless we have a, a surety against this, and it's maintained. None of, none of which can happen unless we have a, a surety against this and it's maintained somehow.
Well, though, most of the lease agreements have a decommissioning clause. How enforceable they are, only time will tell.
Yeah, if a guy goes out of business, he's gone.
Well, it's the same with, same with surety. The guy doesn't pay his bonding company, right?
This is, this is an important issue because it does affect the long-term. The viability of these solar fields is, isn't clear at this point based on the changes in the technology. And who knows exactly what's going to happen in the-
Well, I think just like the solar panels that were subsidized 20 years ago, as soon as the subsidy ended, so did the solar panels, so. These are bigger projects and will have a longer lifespan. I think once the government stops financing them, they're going to-
Stop being made.
Yeah, they're going to stop the install.
So, so I guess to this point, before we approve this, is that, I mean, do we have enough control over that paragraph there? 595.3? Is it clear enough?
Well, it, it provides that there's a form of security that has to be provided. The, the surety can be several types. And we can always approve cash. It's going to be no more, it's going to be more than 125% of the cost of removal and the, any additional requirements that are set, set forth herein. That the project component, proponent shall be, shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the costs prepared by a qualified engineer. And that there'll be a method, mechanism for calculating and adjusting the value of the increase removal cost due to inflation that come along, and that was that five-year period I was talking about.
So the existing, the existing solar fields that are here now, do they have a surety?
Yeah, some of them do. I don't know if all of them do, but I know that some of them do.
Because is this statement amended here? Does this exist? In the bylaws?
There's no decommissioning in the bylaws at this point. Well, what, what's been done is the decommissioning has been requested at the, at the request of the reviewing board.
And again, usually the landowner does that lease. Unless they own it outright, then they may not.
How often are we entitled to review and adjust those annual, just competing during annual meeting?
Yeah.
So we would own this for the next 12 months?
Next six months.
Um, did we vote? I don't know if we voted. We didn't-
You voted, yeah.
Did we get a motion?
I thought I seconded your motion, Mike.
Did you make a motion? Did, accepted as amended?
Yeah, I did. John seconded it.
Okay.
I, I remember hearing him say that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained, one abstention.
Do you want to meet before town meeting? If anything comes up on these before, before next Monday?
No. Do you, you expect something to come up?
No.
Is there anything that would be time-sensitive that wouldn't wait until November?
When's the next meeting?
November 13th. We're just-
Not the 30th?
No, the town meeting.
Our next meeting?
November 13th.
Next, uh, next Monday is our regular meeting night, but it's town meeting, so.
So we're not going to meet before town meeting, right?
At this point, there's no reason to meet before town meetings. I'll get you the the wording on the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
The zoning, zoning articles require a, a statement by the planning board prior to a vote of town meeting.
Yes, no, yes, yes, maybe.
That's the lottery I always lose. I always get the last article. Do you want to take a motion to adjourn?
I would.
George, could I just ask you a question?
Sure.
That Form A that you had to sign because you only had about two days left before
Mm-hmm.
you're locked in. I'm still over the opinion that the official time when that begins is when it gets submitted here, not when it gets submitted to the town clerk. Would it be appropriate to simply ask town council to clarify that and consider putting it, if it is that it happens here, that it gets noted in the regulations as an amendment to your regulations? I, I just think it's unfair for somebody to file something on the 27th of September and then come into the board on a night and say, well, your time period runs out in two days.
I thought it was going to be here. I, I thought it was going to be over.
Well, I think there is a conflict in procedure and mass general law.
Well, it used to be that both, in the case of a Form A, it would be brought to you. I can remember you initially the copy of the Form A
Mm-hmm.
that got taken the next day to the town clerk's office. So there was nothing in the town clerk's office until it was signed by you or another member of the board at that same meeting night. All of a sudden, that sort of stopped. But it's my view, and I just reviewed the, the state regulation. I realize it may be a little confusing, but it says filing with the board. Filing with the town clerk does not file with this board.
I think in some, maybe not in A and R, but in some instances-
In a definitive, I think you're right.
You can do filing with the town clerk.
I think in a definitive, yes, because it requires you to have a public hearing with a certain timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
But under the A and R statute, you've got 21 days from the date of submission.
Mm-hmm. And submission is, I know the language is a little hazy, but we've kind of set the policy in the past that it is submitted here.
So I would suggest that maybe, uh, there may be some other things that need to be updated with the rules and regs.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe that gets inserted as a part of the requirements for the submission procedure in your rules and regulations. If statutorily, you can do it. I'm, I'm asking that maybe Rich Bowen be asked just to confirm that. But if it can be done, I'd recommend it be so that you can point to it and you won't have a case like this where you're forced to make a decision on something two days before the thing expires.
I can ask town council on that, but the action you should have taken if you didn't want to approve it was to find it incomplete in information. And so you were unable to endorse it at this time and reject the, the A and R plan.
I, I agree. And that's why I said maybe it should be withdrawn and refiled, but trying to-
They weren't going to withdraw?
Trying to avert an unnecessary situation. That's why I suggested we'll take care of the details of that roadway in the, in the site plan and see where that takes them. I just hate to see it when you guys are forced to make a decision on something like that with such a short time period. It's not fair to you.
Well, that, last time we had a big issue with freeze plants. There was a zoning change coming before. They submitted a rule about that big.
Well, you can't stop them from doing that, Mike, but-
No, but, but it was submitted-
Talking about when you, you have to make a decision whether it's a Form A plan or it's a subdivision.
But the date started, they, they claimed the date started when they had the, the town clerk picked up the mail and was stamped. That's the date they went by.
In terms of a Form A plan, I don't believe that's correct.
But that's, that's-
They might have done it. I think that's what Mr. Winnika was suggesting tonight with the 20 days. It's not 20 days, it's 21 days that you have to render a decision if it's a subdivision or not. That's, that's the decision you're really making by endorsing the plan. You're saying it's not a subdivision. So.
But if you don't have the information, you need to make that determination.
Yeah.
Because the plan information is incomplete.
Right. And, and the thing is, he's looking for a destructive grant.
Well, we had a, we had issues with the, lots longer where the planner was not you, was, was sitting on plans for too long. And there was some attorneys in town said they were just going to file with the town clerk from that on to avoid that. But it wasn't A and R's, it was subdivisions, definitives and-
Yeah.
Which I believe it's quite clear it can be filed with the town clerk and the national law.
It can, by registered mail, I believe it has to be, though. Because they also, they have to give notice as to when it was filed, so you can hold the public hearing within a certain amount of time. But with a Form A plan, that's not the case. It, it just seems to me it would be good to have that clarified so you don't have to be put behind the eight ball
Mm-hmm.
when it comes before you.
Very good. Anything else? Was a motion made to adjourn? Was there a second?
There is a second.
Sure, you don't want to stay longer? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meeting adjourned at 9:40.